Well, good afternoon everyone, or maybe good evening or morning depending where you're joining us from. You're joining us here on the Launchpad Network for today's SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Project at Kennedy Space Center Launch Complex thirty-nine A FAA Public Hearing. The Federal Aviation Administration FAA as the lead federal agency intends to prepare an environmental impact assessment, an EIS, to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of issuing a commercial launch license, operator license to SpaceX for the Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle to launch from Launch Complex thirty-nine A at NASA Kennedy Space Center in Florida. SpaceX proposes to construct a launch, landing, and other associated infrastructure at and in the proximity of LC thirty-nine A. The proposal would also include Starship Super Heavy launches at LC thirty-nine A, recoverable super heavy booster and Starship landings at LC thirty-nine A or on a drone ship, or expendable super heavy booster and Starship landings in the ocean. SpaceX must obtain a vi- a vehicle operator license from the FAA for Starship Super Heavy launch and landing operations. And today they are having the third public hearing. Two hearings were held in person, they were held on June twelfth and June thirteenth down in Florida. And today they are being held virtually for two hours where the community is able to give their uh feedback and ask questions around today. The virtual meeting will consist of closed caption auto run presentations describing the purpose of the meeting, the project schedule, opportunities for public involvement, and have opportunities to answer questions. Now I'm gonna be quiet and we're just gonna listen in to the Zoom call for today's presentation as it's expected to begin right away. If you're just joining us, take a moment, gauge the like button, share with the stream as we stand by for the beginning of the public hearing around SpaceX bringing Starship operations to Kennedy Space Center in Florida. Stay with us, the meeting should begin shortly.
Good evening everyone, my name is Kevin Oxtelevich and I will be the moderator for today's meeting. I'm with Leidos who is supporting the FAA as a third party contractor. It is now six PM Eastern Time and we will now begin the public meeting. Please note that individual internet connections and bandwidths may impact your viewing experience. Um, we recommend closing all apps and programs and limiting other streaming or downloads during this meeting. We are using Zoom webinar which mutes all participants and limits video feed. Only the meeting host can unmute. Closed captioning is available during this meeting. If it does not appear automatically, you can click on the CC icon or look for the transcript setting. If you are on a mobile device and are using a browser, you may need to tap your screen for the icon or more options to appear. So thank you for joining the Federal Aviation Administration or FAA's Virtual Public Scoping Meeting for the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, for the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex thirty-nine A at the Kennedy Space Center, Florida. The virtual public meeting will begin with a pre-recorded presentation. A facilitated public comment session where interested parties can provide verbal and written comments for the record. We will not host a question and answer session during this meeting. The purpose of this virtual public meeting is to provide you with information on the proposed action and to receive your comments on specific resources and issues you would like to see addressed in the EIS and Section one oh six process. You can indicate you would like to provide verbal comments tonight by using the raise hand icon on your Zoom platform. If you dial in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Please feel free to express your comment, but avoid inappropriate language or derogatory comments. Do not make comments directed to or about other commenters, political statements, or advertisements. Note that you may be placed on mute or removed from the virtual meeting if the ground rules are not followed and we appreciate your cooperation. I will call on commenters in order of raised hands. You can raise your hand at any time during the meeting. We will receive as many comments as time allows and commenters will be limited to three minutes each to accommodate all speakers. You can type comments into the chat function if you do not wish to speak but would like to submit your written comment for the record. If you provide a comment via the chat function, please note that your comments will not be visible to other participants during tonight's meeting. Comments will also be accepted through the federal e-rulemaking portal at www regulations dot gov. You can retrieve the docket by conducting a search for FAA dash two zero two four dash one three nine five and follow the online instructions for submitting comments. Please note that the FAA will post all comments on the internet without changes, including any personal information provided. Comments can also be submitted by US Postal Service to Miss Eva Long, FAA Environmental Protection Specialist, SpaceX, LC thirty-nine A EIS care of Leidos, that's L E I D O S, two eight seven seven Guardian Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two three four two five. All comments are weighed equally. Comments must be submitted electronically or postmarked using the US Postal Service by June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four in order to be considered in the development of the draft EIS. Please be advised that the presentation and script are available in Spanish and are posted on the FAA website. A quick response code or QRC to access the presentation is provided on the screen. We also have a Spanish translator on our team if you wish to comment in Spanish. The translator will repeat in English after each few sentences so the court reporter can record the comment.
La presentación y el guion están disponibles en español y están publicados en la página web de la FAA. En la pantalla se proporciona un enlace a la presentación. Si deseas comentar en español, contamos con un traductor de español en nuestro equipo. El traductor repetirá en inglés después de cada pocas frases para que el taqui- taquígrafo judicial pueda registrar el comentario.
Next is the pre-recorded presentation portion of the public meeting that provides more information about the environmental review process and additional opportunities for your involvement. I will rejoin you after the presentation for our live public comment session. Uh, please bear with us while we deal with a couple of technical difficulties here. Just a, just a moment please. Hey folks, thanks for being patient while we work out some of these technical issues, uh, we'll be with you shortly.
The agenda for this presentation includes information on the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, the proposed action to include the location of the proposed action. Previous NEPA analysis associated with this action, proposed infrastructure improvements, details. The agenda for this. Welcome and thank you for joining the Federal Aviation Administration for the Virtual Public Scoping for the Environmental Impact Statement for the ICHS for the Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex thirty-nine A at the Kennedy Space Center, Florida. On May ten, twenty twenty-four, the FAA announced its intent to prepare an environmental impact statement, or EIS, for the proposed SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex thirty-nine A at Kennedy Space Center in Florida. This EIS will be prepared to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act and the EIS includes a forty-five day public scoping period. The FAA is also conducting consultations under Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act for potential effects on historic properties. Section one oh six allows the public to weigh in on project impact. The agenda for this presentation. The agen- Welcome and thank you for joining the Federal Aviation Administration's or FAA's Virtual Public Scoping Meeting for the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, for the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex thirty-nine A at the Kennedy Space Center, Florida. On May ten, twenty twenty-four, the FAA announced its intent to prepare an environmental impact statement, or EIS, for the proposed SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex thirty-nine A at Kennedy Space Center in Florida. This EIS will be prepared to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act and the EIS includes a forty-five day public scoping period. The FAA is also conducting consultations under Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act for potential effects on historic properties. Section one oh six allows the public to weigh in on project impacts on historic properties before a decision is made. The agenda for this presentation includes information on the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, the proposed action to include the location of the proposed action. Previous NEPA analysis associated with this action, proposed infrastructure improvements, details on the Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle, and proposed launches and landings. This presentation will also discuss alternatives considered as well as the purpose and need for the proposed action. The role of the FAA and cooperating agencies will also be discussed. Finally, resource areas to be studied in the EIS will be discussed. Towards the end of the presentation, information will be provided regarding how to submit scoping comments within and outside of this virtual meeting. The National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, requires all federal agencies to consider the environmental impacts of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. The public is encouraged to participate in the NEPA process. The Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, announced its intent to prepare an EIS on May tenth, twenty twenty-four, and is the lead agency. We are within the forty-five day public comment period ending June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. As you can see from the EIS process chart, we are early in the NEPA process. After the comment period ends, a draft EIS will be prepared. Your comments will be used to determine the resources and alternatives to be analyzed in the report. A notice will be published in the federal register and newspapers when the draft EIS is available to the public. Additional public meetings will then be held to obtain input on the analysis presented in the document. After a forty-five day public comment period, a final EIS will be prepared. As part of the final EIS, we will respond to your comments and update the text as appropriate. The Record of Decision, or ROD, is the final stage in the EIS process. The FAA will issue a ROD that states the decision, any mitigation plans, monitoring requirements, and other items. The ROD completes the environmental review, but it does not guarantee the FAA will issue a license. All safety and other reviews must be completed before the FAA can make a license determination. LC thirty-nine A is a SpaceX leased launch site located on Northern Kennedy Space Center property, approximately three miles east of NASA's Vehicle Assembly Building. LC thirty-nine A currently supports SpaceX Falcon nine and Falcon heavy launches. SpaceX proposes to construct launch, landing, and other associated infrastructure at and in proximity to LC thirty-nine A to support Starship Super Heavy operations. In September two thousand nineteen, NASA completed the Final Environmental Assessment, or EA, for the SpaceX Starship and Super Heavy Launch Vehicle at Kennedy Space Center to evaluate the potential environmental impacts resulting from construction and operations associated with use of LC thirty-nine A for the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle. NASA issued a finding of no significant impact and SpaceX has undertaken infrastructure improvements at LC thirty-nine A, for example, construction of a launch mount. However, the Starship Super Heavy concept of operations has evolved from the original two thousand nineteen EA scope. SpaceX proposes to conduct up to forty-four Starship and Super Heavy Booster launches per year. Launches may occur during the day or at night. Each Starship Super Heavy orbital launch would include landing super heavy boosters at LC thirty-nine A, downrange in the Atlantic Ocean, or on a drone ship. SpaceX could also expend the booster in the Atlantic Ocean, no closer than five nautical miles off the coast. SpaceX would land Starship at LC thirty-nine A or on a drone ship. SpaceX could also expend Starship in the open ocean between fifty-five degrees south latitude and fifty-five degrees north latitude. SpaceX has constructed some infrastructure at LC thirty-nine A to support Starship Super Heavy operations. SpaceX proposes to construct additional infrastructure improvements at LC thirty-nine A to support the Starship Super Heavy. Additional infrastructure improvements to be addressed in the EIS include, but are not limited to, super heavy catch tower, onsite facilities for propellant generation and propellant storage, for example, natural gas pretreatment system and methane liquefier, cooling tower, air separation unit, dilute system. Starship Super Heavy is comprised of two stages. Super Heavy is the first stage, or booster, and Starship is the second stage. As designed, both stages are reusable with any potential refurbishment actions taking place at SpaceX facilities located at NASA's Kennedy Space Center. Both stages are expected to have minimal post-flight refurbishment requirements. However, they may require periodic maintenance and upgrades. Pre-launch activities include testing to ensure that vehicle and ground systems are functioning properly. SpaceX proposed operations include launching Starship Super Heavy from LC thirty-nine A and landings and or recovery. SpaceX proposes to launch Starship Super Heavy up to forty-four times per year with launches occurring anytime during the day or night. Landing of Super Heavy may occur at LC thirty-nine A or downrange in the Atlantic Ocean on a drone ship, which is defined as a mobile vessel not attached to the sea floor. SpaceX could also expend Super Heavy in the Atlantic Ocean, no closer than five nautical miles off the coast, which would result in the scuttling of the booster. Starship could land at LC thirty-nine A or on a drone ship in the Pacific, Atlantic, or Indian Ocean. SpaceX would then be able to reuse Starship for other missions. The Council on Environmental Quality defines reasonable alternatives as those that are technically and economically feasible and meet the purpose and need for the proposed action. The two thousand nineteen EA established LC thirty-nine A as the approved location for Starship Super Heavy operations and infrastructure development as described and analyzed in the two thousand nineteen EA is already underway. Given the above, the only alternative to the proposed action that is proposed to be analyzed in detail in this EIS is the no action alternative. Under the no action alternative, FAA would not issue a vehicle operator license for Starship Super Heavy operations at LC thirty-nine A. SpaceX would not implement further improvements or launch Starship Super Heavy from LC thirty-nine A. Potential impacts associated with the no action alternative will be analyzed in the EIS. In the two thousand nineteen environmental assessment, the purpose and need for Starship Super Heavy at Kennedy Space Center, LC thirty-nine A, was to develop and implement formal agreements with SpaceX for use of NASA assets and to provide services and commodities to enable Starship Super Heavy launches. Commercial use of Kennedy Space Center real property supports NASA's mandate to encourage the fullest commercial use of space, supports the goals of the National Aeronautics and Space Act, and advances the national space policy that federal agencies shall ensure that the United States government's space technology and infrastructure are made available for commercial use on a reimbursable, non-interference, and equitable basis. The need for Starship Super Heavy at Kennedy Space Center aligns with NASA's Commercial Space Launch Act, as amended, which is to support the US goal of encouraging activities by the private sector to strengthen and expand US space transportation infrastructure. Issuance of a license or permit, including renewals and modifications by the FAA is considered a major federal action under NEPA. Thus, FAA is analyzing the environmental impacts of the proposed issuance of a commercial launch vehicle operator license for SpaceX Starship Super Heavy at LC thirty-nine A at Kennedy Space Center, as well as temporary closure of associated airspace in an EIS. FAA's license determination process includes several aspects, which includes a policy, location, safety, and environmental reviews. This EIS would fulfill the environmental review portion of the license evaluation and determination. Successful completion of the environmental review does not guarantee that the FAA will issue a license. This graphic provides a flowchart of the various aspects of the licensing process from initial discussions with FAA, acceptance of a vehicle operator's application, and the determination process. Once issued, a launch vehicle operator license can be valid for a period of up to five years, after which it must be renewed. This EIS has several cooperating agencies that have special expertise that FAA will use in the preparation of the EIS. Cooperating agencies include National Aeronautics and Space Administration, or NASA. United States Coast Guard, Department of the Air Force, United States Fish and Wildlife Service, and National Park Service. NASA owns and operates Kennedy Space Center with jurisdiction by law over activities, including rocket launch activities, proposed to occur at Kennedy Space Center. NASA also has special expertise concerning environmental impacts associated with rocket launch operations. The Coast Guard has jurisdictional authority over safety and security matters in the maritime domain and responsibility to provide offshore support, including search and rescue response actions and safety, and security zone notifications during launch and recovery operations. The Department of the Air Force and the United States Space Force, SLD four-five, at Cape Canaveral Space Force Station, Florida, have relevant expertise in space-related operations in the eastern range. Additionally, the adjacent property directly south of KSCL C three-nine A is managed by SLD four-five. The Air Force and SLD four-five will participate in the review and evaluation of the proposal with regard to airspace, range use, and other potential cumulative impacts of the proposed action. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service manages the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge and will review and evaluate impacts considering its primary responsibility for conservation and management of fish, wildlife, plants, and associated habitats. The National Park Service manages the Cape Canaveral National Seashore and will review impacts to the seashore and affected historic properties. Analysis of potential impacts associated with the proposed action is in the preliminary stages at this time, and the extent of effects to the human and natural environment have not yet been determined. The potential environmental impacts of all proposed construction and operational activities, including those from launch and landing, will be analyzed in the EIS. Resources to be analyzed include: Air quality, Biological resources, including fish, wildlife, and plants; Climate, Coastal resources; Department of Transportation Act, Section four F, properties which are significant publicly owned parks, recreation areas, and wildlife or waterfowl refuges; or any publicly or privately owned historic site listed or eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places; Farmlands; Hazardous materials, solid and hazardous waste, and pollution prevention; Historical, architectural, archaeological, and cultural resources; Land use, Natural resources and energy supplies; Noise and noise-compatible land use; Socioeconomics, environmental justice, and children's health and safety risks; Visual effects; Water resources, including wetlands, floodplains, surface waters, groundwater, and wild and scenic rivers; Cumulative impacts. The FAA is initiating consultation with the following agencies per associated regulatory requirements: The United States Fish and Wildlife Service under Section seven of the Endangered Species Act and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act for potential impacts to protected species and habitats; The National Marine Fisheries Service under Magnuson Stevens Fishery Conservation and Management Act and the Marine Mammal Protection Act for impacts to essential fish habitat and protected species; and the Florida Historic Preservation Office under the National Historic Preservation Act, Section one oh six, for impacts to historic and tribal resources. The public can submit comments on the Section one oh six analysis during this NIPA scoping period and the comment period after the release of the draft EIS. Potential impacts associated with noise from launch and landing activities on the human and natural environment will be analyzed in the EIS. Noise is considered unwanted, extraneous, or annoying sound that interferes with or disrupts normal human activities. The response of different individuals to similar noise events is influenced by the type of noise, perceived importance of the noise, its appropriateness in the setting, time of day, type of activity during which the noise occurs, and sensitivity of the individual. The perception and evaluation of sound involves three basic physical characteristics. Duration: the length of time the sound can be detected. Magnitude: the acoustic energy, which is expressed in terms of sound pressure in decibels. Frequency: the number of cycles per second the air vibrates in hertz. The graphic on the slide shows the sound level of common sounds, ranging from just barely audible, like a quiet recording studio, to the uncomfortable sound levels generated by a nightclub or oxygen torch. Noise analysis with the EIS will consider human annoyance, damage to structures from vibration and sonic booms, effects to land use compatibility, and hearing conservation. Noise impacts to biological resources will also be analyzed. That concludes our presentation session of today's meeting. We appreciate the chance to share the proposed action and the NIPA scoping and Section one oh six consultation processes with you. We invite you to submit comments on specific resources and issues you would like to see addressed in the EIS and Section one oh six consultation process.
Hello, everyone. This is Kevin Oxalevich again, the meeting moderator for the public comment portion of the meeting. Again, I work for Lidos, a third-party contractor for FAA. Just like to say we appreciate your patience while we dealt with some technical issues earlier. Uh, we will now be accepting verbal and written comments for the National Environmental Policy Act, or NIPA, and Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act Public Participation Process. Please note again that this is not a question and answer session. For verbal comments, if you would like to speak during today's meeting, please click on the raised hand icon, likely located at the bottom of your screen, and this will put you into the queue for verbal comments. If you are joining us by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand, and I will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. You will then need to dial star six to complete the unmute process once it's your turn. I will call on individuals in the order they raise their hand. If you are in a mobile device, you may need to tap your screen for the raised hand icon to appear. When it's your turn, you will receive a pop-up box allowing you to unmute yourself. If you are having technical issues with Zoom Webinar, please use the chat feature located at the bottom of your screen to message the host for technical support. For today's public comment session, each speaker will have up to three minutes to state their comment. We will place a timer on the screen to indicate your remaining speaking time. A court reporter will also be recording your comments. We are also accepting written comments into the chat box if you prefer to type in your comment instead of stating it verbally. The chat box is located at the bottom of your screen. Please note that your comments will not be visible to other participants. We will receive as many comments as time allows, and when you are called on, we will ask you to please state and spell your name for the record. As a reminder, please feel free to express your comment, but avoid inappropriate language or derogatory comments. Do not make comments directed to or about the commenters, political statements, or advertisements. Note that you may be placed on mute or removed from the virtual meeting if the ground rules are not followed, and we appreciate your cooperation in this. If we do not have time to hear your comment before the meeting concludes, please provide comments in the docket or mail your comments by June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. The instructions for the docket and mailing address will be shown before the meeting ends. Again, we have a Spanish translator on our team. If you wish to comment in Spanish, the translator will repeat in English after each few sentences, so the court reporter can record the comment. The queue is now open. Uh, please click on the raised hand, raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if you're joining by phone, please dial star nine to be added to the queue. Please remember you have up to three minutes for your comment, and please pay attention to the timer on your screen. A tone will sound when you have thirty seconds left, and the timer will change color at ten seconds. If you have not completed your comment within the allotted time or wish to make another comment, at the end of the comment session, after everyone has spoken, you may raise your hand again to finish your original comment or provide another comment. Okay, so our first speaker is Karen Baker, followed by, uh, Razan, R-S-A-N, then B-I-R-L-C Coalition, then Bob Achkill, and then Carrie McMullin. So, uh, we'll go ahead. Uh, Karen, you are up. Uh, please accept the unmute request, and then before you start your comment, please state and spell your name for the record. Thank you. Karen Baker, go ahead. Okay, thank you, Karen. No comment verbal. Uh, Razan, R-S-A-N, you are on the clock. If you could please, uh, state and spell your name for the record. Uh, Razan, if you could please accept the unmute request. I believe your microphone is still muted. Okay, Razan, we'll come back to you, uh, here after the next couple of speakers. Uh, just be prepared to unmute, uh, when you get that request, so. If you, um, want to unmute, you need to, if you're on the phone, you dial star six to complete the unmute process once it's your turn. Otherwise, you just accept the request that's on your screen in the chat. Okay, so, uh, we'll come back to you, Razan. Uh, next up is B-I-R-L-C Coalition.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, um, so this is Louis Koenig, and I'm with the, uh, Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition and with the, um, Indian River, um, uh, Indian River Lagoon Roundtable. Um, and thank you for having us. Um, the main thing that I want to, uh, uh, emphasize here is the critical, critical, critical importance of fully evaluating the cumulative effects and the indirect impacts of the work that will be done, or not the work, but the ongoing launches. In terms of cumulative impacts, it's essential that all projects, both existing, in process, and anticipated, uh, should be included in the evaluation, and this should apply to any increases in the SpaceX launch frequency. I've seen numbers of one hundred a year, three hundred a year, um, a thousand a year. Um, there are also other, uh, uh, companies and, uh, launchers, Blue Origin and so on. Um, we urge emphatically that you consider the environmental master plan of all changes coming forward that, uh, that is under preparation by Space Florida. In terms of indirect impacts, there's the impact on the lagoon, wastewater, and, um, noise suppression water, all of those waters. Um, the impact or potential impact, um, uh, on the port, and again, Space Florida has a study that should be, uh, incorporated in your analysis. Um, there'll be, uh, impacts that include, uh, closures of the skies and of the port and restrictions on travel. All of those are important issues. Um, and, uh, there should also be a full analysis of the risks of explosive, as, as you said, natural gas, being loaded and unloaded, stored, et cetera, with launches and returns of, uh, boosters. Um, uh, so yes, I, I think, uh, uh, I hope that you will do a very thorough, um, analysis. This is going to have a major impact on our community, and we don't want to do that in a, a, a casual way. One other point, um, there shouldn't be an allowance for increased frequency of launch without another hearing. Thank you very much. I'll give you back my seven seconds.
Hey, thank you very much for your comments, sir. Okay, uh, next up is Bob Achkill. If you could go ahead and, uh, accept the unmute request, and then, um, before you start your comment, please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Bob Achkill, A-C-H-G-I-L-L. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a little bit of background. I worked, uh, with the NASA project Challenger project after the Challenger explosion on failure modes and effects analysis for the Space Shuttle. Um, it was, uh, I was actually involved with all eighteen companies that were providing, um, parts to the Space Shuttle and was looking at and looking over all their failure mode and effects analysis to make them available for managers online to be able to make better decisions for safer, um, safer launches for the vehicle, for the astronauts, for the public. And my observation when, um, when visiting the existing, uh, Starship Launch Facility in Boca Chica was that it was, it was only six miles away from, um, a populated area, and then comparing that to the current, uh, proposed launch site next to Titusville, that's only nine miles away as the crow flies. Um, and I, I asked the FAA if they had done a Launchpad Failure Modes and Effects Analysis on a Launchpad Failure, on an explosion on the Launchpad, and they basically said no. They'd only done a survey of what the sound pressure levels would be on a nominal launch, uh, which is going to be a lot different from if it were to explode on the Launchpad. If you, um, after, after full launches, there is still no transparency on what the actual, uh, sound pressure levels are. Um, that should be addressed, uh, whether therefore matching up with ocean levels or city laws levels for Titusville. There's also the issue of, the government is funding SpaceX commercial venture, and SpaceX is on track right now to be the monopoly for, um, for providing internet for the, the whole world. They're on track to, with their forty-five hundred existing satellites, to be able to capture the global market. And it's not legal to be, for the government to be funding someone, a commercial venture that's going to be doing a monopoly for the whole world. That's my comments for now.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is Carrie McMullin. Uh, if you could go ahead and accept the unmute request and, uh, state and spell your name for the record, you are now on the clock. Thank you. and uh state and spell your name for the record, you are now on the clock. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is Carrie, K-E-R-R-I, McMullin, M-C-M-U-L-L-E-N. Um I am sorry if I missed part of this, but I was wondering if this question could be answered. Uh when the last time these types of meetings were held for space partners along the space coast besides the in-person meetings this week?
Sorry, you're looking for clarification as to when the scoping meetings have occurred?
Yes.
Uh we had uh two scoping meetings last week on Wednesday and Thursday.
I, I'm sorry, um besides the scoping meetings pertaining to Starship, has, when was the last time there was more scoping meetings?
Uh for this particular action, there have only been two scoping meetings.
Have there been scoping meetings for other launches in the past?
Uh the US Air Force had a uh public scoping meetings for uh separate SpaceX projects uh maybe a month or two ago. But again, this is not a question and answer session, ma'am. Do you have a comment for the record for scoping?
That's it. Where can I direct my questions um that I put in the chat?
Uh questions, if you have questions or comments for the uh the EIS, you can put those in the chat. And uh if you have questions for SpaceX, uh you're welcome to reach the uh Public Affairs Office there or at NASA or at the FAA.
Is there gonna be a transcript available of the Zoom?
This meeting will be posted online.
Do you know when that will occur?
That will be tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Sure. Okay. Uh we'll go back to uh Risan, R-S-A-N. See if maybe we can get you back on um if you can go ahead and um accept the unmute request, or if you're calling in on your phone, hit uh star six. And just to clarify, the auto run uh presentation will be posted tomorrow. Uh all the uh scoping comments will be provided as part of the uh administrative record. Uh it doesn't look like we can get Risan uh on the uh on the line here, so um you can go ahead and uh if you have a comment, you can put that in the chat. And we'll go over the uh the methods for submitting comments here again in a few minutes. Uh so our next group of speakers, uh first up, we have Pablo De Leon, Martin Nguyen, and Eric Roche. Uh forgive my uh pronunciations if they're incorrect. Um that's why we ask you to spell, state and spell your name at the beginning of your comment. So first up, uh Pablo, uh if you could please accept the unmute request.
Yes, uh can can you hear me okay?
Can hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Okay, uh my name is Pablo De Leon, P-A-B-L-O, and the last name is De Leon, D-E-L-E-O-N. Um I'm a resident of Cape Canaveral and um looking at the final environmental assessment, I was unable uh and perhaps just because it's two hundred and sixty pages and I was just able to see it today. Any reference to damage to windows or other construction structures due to sound pressure and vibration? Um as uh living in Cape Canaveral, every time that there is a Falcon nine launch, depending of where the wind i- is coming from, uh you can hear a fairly potent uh rattling of uh of windows. And seeing in case of other neighbors with damage to 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 the glass panes. So because um this uh starship will be uh many times more powerful than the Falcon nine. Um I was wondering if that is part of the environmental assessment or is part of a different document that the FAA is looking at? And again, this is a comment, not not a question.
Does that conclude your comments, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh next up is Martin Nguyen. Uh if you could please go ahead and accept the unmute request and then state and spell your name, you are on the clock.
Um hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, uh so this is Martin Nguyen with the EPA. And um uh kind of just going briefly through the um presentation. Um I wanted to echo a sentiment that uh I wanted to echo an earlier comment that uh considered the cumulative impacts of these repeated launches, as well as the frequency of the launches. Um looking through the presentation, I didn't really see too much mention of kind of the atmospheric chemistry um that and the changes that will occur due to these increased uh frequency of launches. So um uh that's gonna be very important as far as ozone depletion and maintaining um the US's participation with the Montreal Protocol where uh um ozone depleting substances um as well as the stratospheric chemistry may be altered due to these increased launches. Um. Uh for the EA or the EIS, um I believe that those effects should also be analyzed um for past launches, in-progress launches and future planned launches as well. Um that concludes my comment.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is Eric Roche. Uh so if you could please go ahead and accept the unmute request and state and spell your name for the record, you are now on the clock.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh my name is Eric Resch, E-R-I-C, last name is Resch, R-O-E-S-C-H. Um I've been a watcher of uh federal approvals across many in- uh industries, uh in particular, oil and gas, and more recently uh rocket launches uh along our US coasts. Uh kind of a general comment, I am disappointed with uh the last decade or so of uh US policy allowing just some of our wonderful and beautiful and wild uh um shorelines to be uh more occupied by industrial activity um year after year. And it feels like um there is a uh explicit cooperation between industry uh and and government to kind of uh smooth these processes along instead of actually looking at how NEPA and other regulations are structured. Um and in particular, I'm calling into this one because I have seen um multiple instances of of um in in Boca Chica with the existing Starship facility. I've I've seen instances of um federal agencies and state agencies, but in particular, the FAA um making risk as- risk assessments that have not borne out. They've been proven false nearly immediately. Um and this is in particular with shorebird deaths uh in Boca Chica have been, you know, higher than estimated. Um a- and and one thing I did want to clarify kind of as a very particular item is that in the past, NEPA documents associated with launches, especially the one down in Boca Chica, the FAA has taken the position that deluge wastewater um from the Starship craft is indistinguishable uh both from a regulatory and from a chemistry angle, from stormwater, which is rainwater. Um and it's supposed to be uh uh contact water that is uh minor. And this is a direct contradiction of the Clean Water Act. Um and my concern is that the agency has taken taken the the opinion that that w- we can just treat deluge water as if it's not a categorical industrial wastewater discharge that is subject to NIPD's provisions in the Clean Water Act. Um and I wanted to make sure that that the Florida DEP, as well as the regional EPA, would be intimately involved with this process from start to finish. Um because your agency has used uh the Fish and Wildlife Service Regional Office down in South Texas to make wastewater determinations that are the uh uh provisions of TCEQ. So th- that's my comment. Um you need to make sure that that this is a fully transparent process because thi- this this type of action uh erodes trust um of the public and our agencies that are supposed to protect our lands and protect our people. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, so next up, we have uh Lori Geiswhite. Uh Diane Campbell. And uh it looks like all we have so far, so. Uh Lori Geiswhite, if you could go ahead, uh you are up. Please accept the unmute request and then uh start your comment by stating and spelling your name for the record, please. You're on the clock.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. My name is Lori Geiswhite, G-U-I-S-E-W-I-T-E. Uh first and foremost, I want to thank my community for having a voice. Um I was born at Holmes Regional in nineteen seventy-five and fortunate to have the father I had uh that has given me the experiences in the space and aero and technology industries. Uh the space coast of Florida is very much my village. I have been in the real estate industry since two thousand and one in corporate and global relocation in which I've represented the layoffs that happened in the space industry. Uh and the commercialized sector came in. I was representing SpaceX as they come in. I've had many friends. Um I'm non-political. I'm I'm happy across the board. But I had extreme anxiety and concern uh with what is coming at a fast-forward pace to our county. I believe our infrastructure is not prepared for it. I have extreme concern that these companies and these entities are not responsible for cleaning up their explosions. Brevard County thrives off several industries, including space tourism. Communicating with locals in Texas, I am an entity that meets and speaks with as many people. I am part of the Human Space Program, I'm part of the National Space Society. Uh and I'm part of the future of the realities of intergalactic life, uh the housing solutions in crisis and incorporating communities, education, space STEM. And what I ask, my statement is wholeheartedly to the people that are actually making these decisions, I ask, please, I beg, you make Brevard County, you make our community, you make what makes us strong, you protect us. And you do not take the paychecks and you do not take the contracts to push forward for the things that are gonna invade our environment, destroy our community and ruin what makes us so strong. One of my favorite things to do is to run Sunrise, meditate. And on my walk back, I pick up as much trash as possible. I save as many turtles as possible, and the amount of trash that I pick up is already overwhelming. What I ask genuinely, heartedly, is that these decisions that are being made on our space coast are not pushing forward with these wealthy, entitled entities, and that is wholeheartedly for the community of Brevard County. Thank you. That's my complete statement.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, so we have next, uh Diane Campbell. Uh so if you could please accept the unmute request and uh state and spell your name for the record, you are on the clock.
Hello, uh my name is Diane Campbell, C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L. I am a medical professional. Uh living in Brevard County has been really a a real headache uh with the the trains and now the uh the launches, the launches, the constant launches that do rattle my windows. Um I think that this um there's too much risk in- involved with this um super heavy to come to the Brevard County coast. We have aging infrastructure, we have causeways that could collapse. We don't need a Sunrise condo situation here in Brevard County. Um i- i- there is many, many old buildings here that perhaps would not uh uh be able to sustain even a a successful launch. Uh a cat uh uh a mislaunch could be catastrophic to the event that we could never recover. Uh secondly, um we are allowing a uh private company into our space zone, almost uh to rule out a Trojan horse event is is what I would like to add because this private company has connections with many uh hundreds of countries around the world with the internet providing and all the satellites launching already. Who's to say that the tables may turn against us when we let this this company into our s- safe zone, this historyed area, which has been for our public safety to allow for this um super heavy event um that could even cause a geologic or or seismic activity. Uh we live on a bed of limestone. And uh how 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 heavy uh can it be before it sinks or or makes a a sinkhole? Um these are the things, uh especially with this, what, almost eighteen millions of launch uh uh pressure? Um i- it seems to be so much for our our little limestone bed that we we live on. And then there's the public health issue, uh the anxiety from all these launches. The punctured sky, I mean, it is sad to see the sky, it looks like someone punched in the lungs. I mean, all these launches, how many is enough? What is our ozone layer looking like now? The particulates that come after a launch, when there is a change, if there, if it decides to rain quickly and the wind blows, this stuff comes right at you, on your face. Um and then there's the incidence of brain, uh bladder and skin cancers already prevalent in Brevard County. So these are the things um that I hope that this risk is too great and that it is a no action uh on this um this project. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Uh doesn't look like we have any other folks uh with their uh hands raised. I will mention that um, you know, if you did not feel the need to speak, but you would like to submit comments, um you can uh do that uh by going to the federal E rulemaking portal at W-W-W dot regulations dot gov. Uh you can retrieve the docket by conducting a search for FAA twenty twenty-four dash one three nine five and follow the online instructions uh for submitting comments. Uh they can also be submitted by US Postal Service uh to Ms. Eva Long, FAA Environmental Protection Specialist uh at SpaceX LC thirty-nine eight EIS, care of Lidos two eight seven seven Guardian Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two three four five two. Uh and you can also uh type them into the uh chat here if uh if you did not want to speak. Uh regardless of how those comments are submitted, uh all comments are weighed equally. Uh but we must receive your comments uh either electronically or postmarked via US Postal Service by June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four in order to be considered in the development of the draft EIS. There's also information on the FAA website uh about the project, including fact sheets uh that you can download. Uh and then you can join the mailing list as well by hitting the QRC code uh shown on your screen. So uh considering that uh it looks like we have one more person that raised their hands uh while I was speaking. So uh David Leeds. Uh if you could go ahead and uh hit the un- unmute request. And then uh you can go ahead, uh state your name, spell your last name, and then uh you'll be on the clock.
Hi, my name is David Leeds. That's Delta Alpha Victor India Delta. Last name Lima Echo Echo Delta Sierra. And I just want to say that I'm a local resident. I work at Kennedy Space Center. Uh don't work for SpaceX, but I'm in full support of the Starship. And I think it's a great program for Space Coast Florida to half-year. I think the FAA is doing great work in terms of approving the licenses and taking the due diligence to look at the environmental impacts. And I think it's critical that we push forward with this and continue building. And I think it's critical that we push forward with this and continue building. I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, so what we plan on doing now for those folks that maybe joined late is we're going to go ahead and run through the automated pre-recorded presentation that was shown earlier for those folks that maybe missed it or or missed part of it. That provides information on the project, then we'll follow that again by facilitated public comment session where interested parties can provide verbal and written comments for the record. During this time, we'll continue to receive chat comments. Please be advised that the presentation and script are available in Spanish and are posted on the FAA website. And we have a Spanish translator on our team. If you wish to comment in Spanish, the translator will repeat in English after each few sentences so the court reporter can record the comments.
Welcome and thank you for joining the Federal Aviation Administration's, or FAA's, virtual public scoping meeting for the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, for the SpaceX Starship Superheavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex Thirty-nine A at the Kennedy Space Center, Florida. On May ten, twenty twenty-four, the FAA announced its intent to prepare an Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, for the proposed SpaceX Starship Superheavy Launch Vehicle at Launch Complex Thirty-nine A at Kennedy Space Center in Florida. This EIS will be prepared to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, and the EIS includes a forty-five-day public scoping period. The FAA is also conducting consultations under Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act for potential effects on historic properties. Section one oh six allows the public to weigh in on project impacts on historic properties before a decision is made.
If you were just joining us, the FAA is replaying the recorded presentation about the Starship program coming to NASA Kennedy Space Center at Launch Complex Thirty-nine A. They will play through this. It's about a ten-minute or so presentation with a very interesting robot voice, and then they will have time for more public comments. If you'd like to have your own public comment, you can join the Zoom with the FAA. We've dropped the link in the chat there. It is a public hearing, so you can have your comments recorded. You get three minutes to present. You can either speak verbally or submit via the chat, or you can submit through that website link in the chat via mail. You have a few more days to be able to do that, but they are going to replay this presentation in case people joined late. And then we will be taking more, here listening to more public feedback and maybe even some more of you speaking during today's public hearing. So let's listen back into the FAA and this pre-recorded presentation.
... Policy Act. NEPA requires all federal agencies to consider the environmental impacts of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. The public is encouraged to participate in the NEPA process. The Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, announced its intent to prepare an EIS on May tenth, twenty twenty-four, and is the lead agency. We are within the forty-five-day public comment period ending June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. As you can see from the EIS process chart, we are early in the NEPA process. After the comment period ends, a draft EIS will be prepared. Your comments will be used to determine the resources and alternatives to be analyzed in the report. A notice will be published in the Federal Register and newspapers when the draft EIS is available to the public. Additional public meetings will then be held to obtain input on the analysis presented in the document. After a forty-five-day public comment period, a final EIS will be prepared. As part of the final EIS, we will respond to your comments and update the text as appropriate. The Record of Decision, or ROD, is the final stage in the EIS process. The FAA will issue a ROD that states the decision, any mitigation plans, monitoring requirements, and other items. The ROD completes the environmental review, but it does not guarantee the FAA will issue a license. All safety and other reviews must be completed before the FAA can make a license determination. LC thirty-nine A is a SpaceX leased launch site located on Northern Kennedy Space Center property, approximately three miles east of NASA's Vehicle Assembly Building. LC thirty-nine A currently supports SpaceX Falcon nine and Falcon Heavy launches. SpaceX proposes to construct launch, landing, and other associated infrastructure at and in proximity to LC thirty-nine A to support Starship Superheavy operations. In September two thousand nineteen, NASA completed the Final Environmental Assessment, or EA, for the SpaceX Starship and Superheavy Launch Vehicle at Kennedy Space Center to evaluate the potential environmental impacts resulting from construction and operations associated with use of LC thirty-nine A for the SpaceX Starship Superheavy Launch Vehicle. NASA issued a finding of no significant impact, and SpaceX has undertaken infrastructure improvements at LC thirty-nine A. For example, construction of a launch mount. However, the Starship Superheavy concept of operations has evolved from the original two thousand nineteen EA scope. SpaceX proposes to conduct up to forty-four Starship and Superheavy Booster launches per year. Launches may occur during the day or at night. Each Starship Superheavy orbital launch would include landing Superheavy boosters at LC thirty-nine A, downrange in the Atlantic Ocean, or on a drone ship. SpaceX could also expend the booster in the Atlantic Ocean, no closer than five nautical miles off the coast. SpaceX would land Starship at LC thirty-nine A or on a drone ship. SpaceX could also expend Starship in the open ocean between fifty-five degrees south latitude and fifty-five degrees north latitude. SpaceX has constructed some infrastructure at LC thirty-nine A to support Starship Superheavy operations. SpaceX proposes to construct additional infrastructure improvements at LC thirty-nine A to support the Starship Superheavy. Additional infrastructure improvements to be addressed in the EIS include, but are not limited to, Superheavy catch tower, onsite facilities for propellant generation and propellant storage, for example, natural gas pretreatment system and methane liquefier, cooling tower, air separation unit, diluge system. Starship Superheavy is comprised of two stages. Superheavy is the first stage, or booster, and Starship is the second stage. As designed, both stages are reusable, with any potential refurbishment actions taking place at SpaceX facilities located at NASA's Kennedy Space Center. Both stages are expected to have minimal post-flight refurbishment requirements. However, they may require periodic maintenance and upgrades. Pre-launch activities include testing to ensure that vehicle and ground systems are functioning properly. SpaceX proposed operations include launching Starship Superheavy from LC thirty-nine A and landings and/or recovery. SpaceX proposes to launch Starship Superheavy up to forty-four times per year, with launches occurring anytime during the day or night. Landing of Superheavy may occur at LC thirty-nine A or downrange in the Atlantic Ocean on a drone ship, which is defined as a mobile vessel not attached to the sea floor. SpaceX could also expend Superheavy in the Atlantic Ocean, no closer than five nautical miles off the coast, which would result in the scuttling of the booster. Starship could land at LC thirty-nine A or on a drone ship in the Pacific, Atlantic, or Indian Ocean. SpaceX would then be able to reuse Starship for other missions. The Council on Environmental Quality defines reasonable alternatives as those that are technically and economically feasible and meet the purpose and need for the proposed action. The two thousand nineteen EA established LC thirty-nine A as the approved location for Starship Superheavy operations and infrastructure development as described and analyzed in the two thousand nineteen EA is already underway. Given the above, the only alternative to the proposed action that is proposed to be analyzed in detail in this EIS is the no-action alternative. Under the no-action alternative, FAA would not issue a vehicle operator license for Starship Superheavy operations at LC thirty-nine A. SpaceX would not implement further improvements or launch Starship Superheavy from LC thirty-nine A. Potential impacts associated with the no-action alternative will be analyzed in the EIS. In the two thousand nineteen Environmental Assessment, the purpose and need for Starship Superheavy at Kennedy Space Center, LC thirty-nine A, was to develop and implement formal agreements with SpaceX for use of NASA assets and to provide services and commodities to enable Starship Superheavy launches. Commercial use of Kennedy Space Center real property supports NASA's mandate to encourage the fullest commercial use of space, supports the goals of the National Aeronautics and Space Act, and advances the national space policy that federal agencies shall ensure that the United States government's space technology and infrastructure are made available for commercial use on a reimbursable, non-interference, and equitable basis. The need for Starship Superheavy at Kennedy Space Center aligns with NASA's Commercial Space Launch Act, as amended, which is to support the US goal of encouraging activities by the private sector to strengthen and expand US space transportation infrastructure. Issuance of a license or permit, including renewals and modifications, by the FAA is considered a major federal action under NEPA. Thus, FAA is analyzing the environmental impacts of the proposed issuance of a commercial launch vehicle operator license for SpaceX Starship Superheavy at LC thirty-nine A at Kennedy Space Center, as well as temporary closure of associated airspace in an EIS. FAA's license determination process includes several aspects, which includes a policy, location, safety, and environmental reviews. This EIS would fulfill the environmental review portion of the license evaluation and determination. Successful completion of the environmental review does not guarantee that the FAA will issue a license. This graphic provides a flowchart of the various aspects of the licensing process from initial discussions with FAA, acceptance of a vehicle operator's application, and the determination process. Once issued, a launch vehicle operator license can be valid for a period of up to five years, after which it must be renewed. This EIS has several cooperating agencies that have special expertise that FAA will use in the preparation of the EIS. Cooperating agencies include National Aeronautics and Space Administration, or NASA, United States Coast Guard, Department of the Air Force, United States Fish and Wildlife Service, and National Park Service. NASA owns and operates Kennedy Space Center with jurisdiction by law over activities, including rocket launch activities proposed to occur at Kennedy Space Center. NASA also has special expertise concerning environmental impacts associated with rocket launch operations. The Coast Guard has jurisdictional authority over safety and security matters in the maritime domain and responsibility to provide offshore support, including search and rescue response actions and safety and security zone notifications during launch and recovery operations. The Department of the Air Force and the United States Space Force, SLD four-five, at Cape Canaveral Space Force Station, Florida, have relevant expertise in space-related operations in the eastern range. Additionally, the adjacent property directly south of KSCL C thirty-nine A is managed by SLD four-five. The Air Force and SLD four-five will participate in the review and evaluation of the proposal with regard to airspace, range use, and other potential cumulative impacts of the proposed action. The US Fish and Wildlife Service manages the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge and will review and evaluate impacts considering its primary responsibility for conservation and management of fish, wildlife, plants, and associated habitats. The National Park Service manages the Cape Canaveral National Seashore and will review impacts to the seashore and affected historic properties. Analysis of potential impacts associated with the proposed action is in the preliminary stages at this time, and the extent of effects to the human and natural environment have not yet been determined. The potential environmental impacts of all proposed construction and operational activities, including those from launch and landing, will be analyzed in the EIS. Resources to be analyzed include air quality, biological resources, including fish, wildlife, and plants, climate, coastal resources, Department of Transportation Act, Section four F, properties which are significant publicly-owned parks, recreation areas, and wildlife or waterfowl refuges, or any publicly or privately owned historic site listed or eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, farmlands, hazardous materials, solid and hazardous waste, and pollution prevention, historical, architectural, archaeological, and cultural resources, land use, natural resources and energy supplies, noise and noise-compatible land use, socioeconomics, environmental justice, and children's health and safety risks, visual effects, water resources, including wetlands, floodplains, surface waters, groundwater, and wild and scenic rivers. Cumulative impacts. The FAA is initiating consultation with the following agencies per associated regulatory requirements: the United States Fish and Wildlife Service under Section seven of the Endangered Species Act and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act for potential impacts to protected species and habitats; the National Marine Fisheries Service under Magnuson Stevens Fisheries Conservation and Management Act and the Marine Mammal Protection Act for impacts to essential fish habitat and protected species; and the Florida Historic Preservation Office under the National Historic Preservation Act, Section one oh six, for impacts to historic and tribal resources. The public can submit comments on the Section one oh six analysis during this NEPA scoping period and the comment period after the release of the draft EIS. Potential impacts associated with noise from launch and landing activities on the human and natural environment will be analyzed in the EIS. Noise is considered unwanted, extraneous, or annoying sound that interferes with or disrupts normal human activities. The response of different individuals to similar noise events is influenced by the type of noise, perceived importance of the noise, its appropriateness in the setting, time of day, type of activity during which the noise occurs, and sensitivity of the individual. The perception and evaluation of sound involves three basic physical characteristics. Duration: the length of time the sound can be detected. Magnitude: the acoustic energy, which is expressed in terms of sound pressure in decibels. Frequency: the number of cycles per second the air vibrates in hertz. The graphic on the slide shows the sound level of common sounds, ranging from just barely audible, like a quiet recording studio, to the uncomfortable sound levels generated by a nightclub or oxygen torch. Noise analysis with the EIS will consider human annoyance, damage to structures from vibration and sonic booms, effects to land use compatibility, and hearing conservation. Noise impacts to biological resources will also be analyzed. That concludes our presentation session of today's meeting. We appreciate the chance to share the proposed action and the NEPA scoping and Section one oh six consultation processes with you. We invite you to submit comments on specific resources and issues you would like to see addressed in the EIS and Section one oh six consultation processes with you. you would like to see addressed in the EIS and Section one oh six consultation process.
All right, folks, this is Kevin Oxleavage, the meeting moderator for the public comment portion of the meeting. Again, I work for LEIDOS, a third-party contractor for FAA. For those folks that are coming in late or still sticking around, we will be accepting verbal and written comments for the National Environmental Policy Act and Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act Public Participation Process. Just want to run through some of the tools that we have available to allow you to comment. For verbal comments, if you'd like to speak today during today's meeting, please click on the raise hand icon likely located at the bottom of your screen, and this will put you into the queue for verbal comments. If you are joining us by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand, and I will call on you by the last three digits of your phone number. You will then need to dial star six to complete the unmute process once it's your turn. I will call on individuals in order that they raise their hand. If you are on a mobile device, you may need to tap your screen for the raise hand icon to appear. When it is your turn, you will receive a pop-up box allowing you to unmute yourself. If you are having technical issues with Zoom webinar, please use the chat feature located at the bottom of your screen to message the host for technical support. For today's public comment session, each speaker will have up to three minutes to state their comments. We will place a timer on the screen to indicate your remaining speaking time. A court reporter is also present to record your comments. We are also accepting written comments in the chat box. If you prefer to type in your comments instead of stating it verbally, the chat box is located at the bottom of your screen. Please note that your comments will not be visible to other participants. We will receive as many comments as time allows. The meeting runs until eight PM Eastern Time, so we've got just about a half an hour. When you are called on, we will ask you to please state and spell your name for the record. Just as a reminder, please feel free to express your comment but avoid inappropriate language or derogatory comments. Do not make comments directed to or about other commenters, political statements, or advertisements. Note that you may be placed on mute or removed from the virtual meeting if the ground rules are not followed, and we appreciate your cooperation. If we do not have time to hear your comment before the meeting concludes, please provide comments in the docket or mail your comments by June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The instructions for the docket and mailing address will be shown before the meeting ends. The queue is now open, so please click on the raise your hand icon likely located at the bottom of your screen, or if you're joining us by phone, please dial star nine to be added to the queue. And again, we have a Spanish translator on our team if you wish to comment in Spanish. The translator will repeat in English after each few sentences, so the court reporter can record the comment. Please remember you have up to three minutes for your comments, and pay attention to the timer on your screen. The timer will change color at ten seconds. If you have not completed your comment within the allotted time or wish to make another comment, if time allows, before the meeting ends and after everyone else has spoken, you may raise your hand again to finish your original comment or provide another comment. Let's see. As of now, we don't have any attendees signed up to speak. Again, if you are joining us by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand, and I will call on you by the last three digits of your phone number. Again, you can also type comments in the chat function if you do not want to speak. If you would like to speak, please click on the raise hand icon. There are some other avenues for you to be able to comment. Again, we are accepting comments through the federal E rulemaking portal at www dot regulations dot gov. You can retrieve the docket by conducting a search for FAA dash two zero two four dash one three nine five and follow the online instructions for submitting comments. Please note that the FAA will post all comments on the Internet without changes, including any personal information provided. Comments can also be submitted by U.S. Postal Service to Miss Eva Long, FAA Environmental Protection Specialist, SpaceX LC thirty nine A EIS, care of LEIDOS, that's L E I D O S, two eight seven seven Guardian Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two three four five two. All comments are weighed equally regardless of how they are submitted. And in order to be considered in the development of the draft EIS, comments must be submitted electronically or postmarked using U.S. Postal Service by June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. You can also join the mailing list to receive email updates by using the QRC code that is shown on the screen. And the FAA website has project information, including fact sheets that provide much more detail on the project. You can download those on the FAA website. And as mentioned previously, the automated presentation will be posted to the FAA website as well. So we've got one person raised their hand. Harris Rothermel. Pardon my pronunciation there of your name, but if you could go ahead and accept the unmute request and then state and spell your name for the record, you are on the clock.
Good afternoon. Is my audio coming through all right?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, my name is Harris Rothermel, R O T H A E R M E L. I've previously worked in the aerospace industry at NASA Glenn Research Center, Varda Space Industries, and Care Rather, working on various projects from physics simulations to flight software and launching small satellites. And for me, I'm in full support of SpaceX and their launch operations at LC thirty nine A. SpaceX represents the best of U.S. industry. They've pushed the boundaries of what's possible, having reduced the cost of reaching space and also enabled a brighter future through new technologies like their Starlink internet constellation. Just as the rapid partial reusability of SpaceX's Falcon nine has enabled Starlink, the Starship Superheavy vehicle will enable entirely new technologies such as commercial space stations, pharmaceutical drug discovery in zero gravity, manufacturing space, new telecommunications, new Earth observations, fundamental science, and much more. Starship will also be the first vehicle bringing humanity back to the moon since the Apollo program, paving the way for human outposts on the moon and Mars. And over the past seven years of launching from LC thirty nine A, SpaceX has shown that they have taken measures needed to protect the environment in their endeavors, and as such, we should have no reason to believe that they will not continue to do so. There will always be risk with new endeavors, but as always, the question is, is the risk worth it? And in this case, I believe that is an overwhelming yes. That's my full comment, and thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, if you'd like to make a verbal comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. Click on the raise hand icon located at the bottom of your screen, and we'll get you into the queue for verbal comments. Again, if you're joining us by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, and then you'll need to dial star six to complete the unmute process once it's your turn. And you can also type comments into the chat function if you do not want to speak but would like to submit a written comment for the record. Looks like we've got somebody on the queue here. David GDO, Godo. If you could go ahead and accept the unmute request and then state and spell your name, you're on the clock, sir.
Hi, hello. My name is David Guajardo. That is G U A J A R D O. And I have a question for the airspace surrounding the Kennedy Space Center. Regarding the Starship operations, does that actual airspace increases and decreases eventually with the operation of Starship becoming more reliable or stays within the same airspace radius? And I'm talking to the, in reference to the airplanes and the airlines. And this question also, I would like to have a comparison between the same radius between the Falcon nine rocket and eventually the Starship rocket. So these radius remains the same regardless of the rocket that is launching from there, or it actually changes? Thank you.
Hey, sir. Thank you for your comment. As mentioned earlier, this is not a question-answer session, but your comment is noted for the record. Thank you. And so again, verbal comments, go ahead and raise your hand using the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. You can dial star nine to raise your hand and then use star six to complete the unmute process if you're joining us by phone. Or you can use the chat function to provide a written comment. We're also receiving comments with the federal E rulemaking portal, www dot regulations dot gov. Search for the docket FAA dash two zero two four dash one three nine five. There are instructions online for how to submit comments. You can also provide them by U.S. Postal Service to Miss Eva Long, FAA Environmental Protection Specialist, SpaceX LC thirty nine A EIS, care of LEIDOS, LEI D O S, two eight seven seven Guardian Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two three four five two. Again, regardless of how those comments are provided to us, they're all weighed equally. However, we must receive those comments, or they must be postmarked by U.S. Postal Service by June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four in order for us to consider them in the development of the draft EIS. And once again, the FAA website has a lot of project information, including fact sheets that you can download. So we have just about another twenty minutes or so that we are accepting verbal and chat comments. And you can see on your screen how to to get in the queue. Looks like we've got somebody ready to speak. So this is Samsung SM dash P six one three. If you want to go ahead and accept the unmute request, if you would like to provide your name and spell that for us for the record, and then you will be on the clock.
Okay. This is Earl Johnson. Can you hear me?
Can hear you loud and clear. If you could spell your name for us, that would be appreciated.
First off, I am not Samsung, so Earl Johnson, J O H N S O N. My comments are several. One is I'm concerned about the proximity of what I would consider many critical NASA facilities close by on thirty nine A, predominantly LCC, VAB, PAD-B, LOX and LH two storage facilities among many other critical facilities to NASA's Artemis program. And it occurs to me that if there were a pad accident or even worse yet, an accident, an explosion shortly after liftoff, that significant number of NASA facilities would be dramatically impacted. And I would say the Artemis program would be out of business for quite some time, if not permanently, for that to happen. Never mind SpaceX's own endeavors. The secondary, second comment is NASA's analysis, their environmental analysis on this, I think, now have not read it all, but it seems to me that it is what I would call success-oriented. And if anything should indicate some issues with NASA's own analysis, it should be the shuttle programs cave report after the Challenger accidents and the Columbia problems on return. So those issues should not be forgotten. They should be consulted. And even though I realize those are flight impacts, it has to do with the decision-making process that led up to those problems. I also think that at forty-four flights a year, that's basically eight days, every eight days would be a flight. And I'm thinking that for their surrounding community, Titusville specifically, Titusville's solo access to a beach, Playa Linda Beach, seems to me would be effectively permanently closed, as would effectively the Nationals, Canaveral National Seashore, if this were to be located on PAD thirty nine A. I think a significantly better choice for its location would be on the Cape side, which has already been covered before. And I think, I personally think that the location of PAD thirty nine A is a bad choice for for the Starship. It would be much better suited for it on the Cape side.
All right. Thank you, sir. Just to clarify, your first name was Earl, E A I, excuse me, E A R L. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so while we wait, if there's anybody else that would like to make a comment, again, for verbal comments, you can click the raise hand icon, and we can go ahead and call on you. That'll put you in the queue for verbal comments. If you are joining us by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, and then that will get you in the queue as well. And then you'll just need to dial star six to complete the unmute process once it's your turn. And you're also welcome to type comments in the chat function if you do not want to speak but would like to submit your written comment for the record. Written comments are also accepted on the federal E rulemaking portal at www dot regulations dot gov. Search by the docket FAA dash two zero two four dash one three nine five and follow the online instructions for submitting comments. Just note that the FAA will post all comments on the Internet without changes, including any personal information provided. Written comments can also be submitted by U.S. Postal Service to Miss Eva Long, FAA Environmental Protection Specialist, SpaceX LC thirty nine A EIS, care of LEIDOS, LEI D O S, two eight seven seven Guardian Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two three four five two. Again, all comments will be treated equally regardless of how they are submitted. We just need to get your comments either electronically or postmarked using the U.S. Postal Service by June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four so that we can consider them in development of the draft EIS. The FAA website has project information, including fact sheets, available for download as well. And so we've got about fifteen more minutes. And you can sign up to get into the queue for verbal comments by using the raise hand icon. Or if you're on the phone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand as well. And continue to get comments in the chat function, which is great. We welcome all comments. Again, if you would like to digest the information and comment later, you can provide those comments using the Federal E. Rulemaking Portal at www regulations.gov. Just search for the docket number FAA-2024-1395. And there are instructions online for how to submit comments through the docket. And also, again, you can use U.S. Postal Service to send comments to Ms. Eva Long. The address is on the screen as well as, I will read it off for those folks on the phone. That's Ms. Eva Long, FAA Environmental Protection Specialist, SpaceX LC-39A EIS, care of Leidos, LEIDOS, at 2877 Guardian Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23452. And we need to get those comments in electronically or postmarked via U.S. Postal Service by June 24, 2024 in order to be considered in the development of the draft. And there's a QR code if you'd like to join the mailing list. And the FAA has project information, including fact sheets that you can download. So we've got a little over 10 minutes left. I'm going to take a break here and have a drink of water and I'll be back in a couple of minutes. We'll see if any folks raise their hands or would like to speak and we'll go ahead and take care of those folks. So, but we'll be here until 8 o'clock. Hey there, folks. We've got about 10 minutes left. So again, verbal comments, if you'd like to speak, just go ahead and hit the raise hand icon located at the bottom of your screen to get into the queue. If you're joining us by phone, you can dial 9 to raise your hand and then you'll just need to use dial 6 to unmute yourself. And of course, you can also type comments into the chat function if you do not want to speak. Looks like we have David Leozbajardo again would like to speak. So seeing as how we don't have anybody else, we can go ahead and let you go again. So if you want to go ahead and accept the unmute and just state and spell your name again for the record and you'll be on the clock once more.
Hi, my name is David Leozbajardo. My apologies for the previous question. As far as the comments, I just wanted to express my sincere gratitude and say thank you for all the employees from the FAA for working so hard. I know you guys have stated in the past that the actual employees are shorthanded towards the Starship Development Program. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for working so, as fast as possible and making all this innovation happen for all of us. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir. Again, we're here till 8 o'clock, so we've got about eight more minutes. I'll go ahead and turn my camera off here. I'll come back here in about 5:02, unless we get anybody else that would like to speak. So we'll be back here in a few minutes. Okay, it looks like we have somebody in the queue. The screen name is iPad Ali Battersby. Apologize if I mispronounced anything, but if you go ahead and accept your unmutes, state your name, your full name and spell it as well for the record and then you're on the clock.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ali, A-L-I, Battersby, B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y. And unfortunately, I was trying to get into this Zoom earlier and I wasn't able to. We are out of town and I just caught it at the end. But I imagine you might have covered this. But with the upstepping of this program, about how often would we have launches? Because I've noticed, we live in an area where it's being affected by the launches and we're just wondering how many more launches are going to be going up, say in a week than we are used to right now, which as I said before, it's been stepped up quite a bit since we've lived here.
Okay, ma'am. So this is not a question-and-answer session. I will state that the information is in the presentation, which will be provided online at the FAA website tomorrow. Although the information is in the presentation, I will say that the proposed action involves up to 44 launches per year, either day or night. But again, this is not a question-and-answer session. If you do have comments or concerns regarding the proposed action, you're welcome to provide those at this time.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sure. Okay, it looks like Bob Ackill is up next. You go ahead and accept your unmute and again, just please spell, state and spell your name for the record.
Yeah, it's A-C-H-G-I-L-L. And just a couple more add-on comments. I, when the Army Corps of Engineers did the the re-permitting of, for the second launch tower down in Boca Chica, they took in comments, but those were never posted online that I could find. And they did not receive public comments. I thank you all for doing that this time. It's really nice as part of the public to be able to participate in helping to show different viewpoints on what the fears and the needs of the public are. So it'd be nice if the Army Corps could post those comments. As far as one of the things that I commented on was the near and dear to the Texas people was the Texas City Port explosion of the 1949 of the Grand Camp ship. If you'll go back and look at the report by the Bureau of Mines, it said that there was a 15-foot tidal wave that was caused by that explosion of the Grand Camp that had ammonium nitrate on it. The size of the payload of Starship with super-heavy booster is roughly equivalent to what the Grand Camp explosion was. So has there been any analysis about a tidal wave being produced in the inland waterways and headed toward Titusville? And are the people of Titusville going to be affected by that? Not only the, of course, the shock wave of what will happen to their ears and to their brains by having probably much more than a welder's torch or a rock concert? Because having the whole load explode on the launch pad in just a couple of seconds, you'll have all that energy released. I would like to see a real cross comparative failure modes and effects analysis of what a launch pad explosion would do. With some of the people that have commented on that, it would maybe damage a lot of things on the Cape Canaveral, but nine miles away is not very far for a 1/18th the size of Hiroshima explosion.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comment. Appreciate it. Next up is Diane Campbell. Go ahead and accept the unmutes and just please state and spell your name again for the record and then you're on the clock.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll be quick. Regarding the risk of this private corporation that could impact the populations of Brevard County of 600,000, Orange County of 1.45 million and a whole lot more of population would be affected than where this Boca Chica, Texas is with the Cameron County of about 200,000. And I read that these launches could be just for private use, say a Japanese businessman wanted to go take a ride to the moon. This would be an unacceptable risk for us because our public could be so impacted by a whim of a rich person. The fact is, is that if this were, you know, for the public good, that would be a different situation as opposed to a private company's efforts to, you know, make money at our risk. And so I just think that would be really something very important to add into the picture here that, you know, arbitrary launches are a risk just as much as ones that are sanctioned by our country. So I hope that that is something that is also taken into account in the discussions of this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So we have, it's 8 o'clock, just after 8 o'clock right now. So we've got one more person that is in the queue and we'll go ahead and allow that person to speak, Bobby Whitmore. If you could go ahead and accept the unmute button or the unmute request and then state and spell your name for the record and you are on the clock. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much for letting me talk past the 8 o'clock timeline. This is actually Brad Whitmore, B-R-A-D-W-H-I-T-M-O-R-E on Bobby Whitmore's laptop since it's sitting on my desk. I wanted to address noise and vibration considerations. My neighborhood is the historic Cocoa Village, which is located over on the mainland in 520, so less than 20 miles from the launch complex. Happy to see that the National Registry of Historic Places has a voice in this. We have at least one building, our Playhouse, which is on that registry, but many other businesses dating back to the late 1800s through the 1920s that would be subject to what's going on. I am very much pro-space and everything going on and it's very exciting. Nonetheless, we do need to look at protecting property and architecture and buildings, whether they're residential, business or historic. And I'm hearing talk in our area of people thinking that things are changing with the increase in launch frequency. So my takeaway is this, and I won't talk long, but basically we need to come up with something to acknowledge that if, in fact, this is happening and B, come up with a mitigation plan to where we don't destroy our beloved structures in the area in the name of progress in space exploration. So that being said, I will leave you with it and good luck with coming up with a mitigation program for the regular launch schedule of what we'll be dealing with on a regular basis to protect our communities. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, so it's now just past 8 o'clock Eastern Time. So our meeting has now concluded. Please submit your written comments to us by mail or the docket shown on the screen. All written comments, again, all written comments must be postmarked by 11:59 PM Eastern Time on June 24, 2024 to be considered in the development of the draft EIS. Those in the media may contact the FAA Public Affairs Officer at pressoffice, that's one word, pressoffice@faa.gov. The meeting presentation slides will be posted on the FAA website, both in English and Spanish. And then to join the mailing list, send an email to spacexstarship39aeis, that's all one word, at icf.com. You can also use the QR code that is on the screen. And if you would like more information on any of the topics discussed in today's presentation, please go to the FAA website, which is listed at the bottom of the screen. Thank you for attending this meeting. Appreciate everybody's input. Our team looks forward to hearing your comments and appreciates your participation and time. Thank you all very much.